Welcome to the Oxford Area School District Board of Directors' regular meeting for September 16th. It is 7:10. Please join me with the Pledges of Allegiance.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please welcome Mr. Cuddy.
Certainly. Mr. Atkinson.
Here.
Mr. Blessington.
Here.
Ms. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Dewey.
Here.
Ms. Case.
Here.
Mr. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Patterson, absent. Ms. Vendrick.
Here.
Ms. Warren.
Here.
You have form.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We're going to start off by amending the agenda. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Mark Patterson effective September 16th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion. Second?
Second.
Oh, it's a motion. All right, we'll have to put it on as a motion. So where are we going to put that? All? Okay. All in favor of adding this as a motion? Aye. opposed? Okay. Um, is there any other? Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's a policy that we have up for readoption, policy 4520. We spoke about at length last time, and it was surrounding professional development leave. I don't know if the time... I would like to discuss it further after the meeting. I mean, at home, I thought about it at length, and I think it needs further discussion. I don't know if we readopt it and then the policy committee takes it back up, or if we withdraw it from the vote for readoption and have a discussion on it tonight.
I'd like to, in the cleanest ways, amend the agenda to withdraw.
Okay.
Or make a motion to do that.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to withdraw policy 4520 from item... I'm sorry, I should have... From item F.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Thank you.
So do I have a motion to accept the amended... amended agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Just to be clear, it would be item J under new business for the accepting of the resignation. Yes? Item J under new business.
Okay. Any public comment concerning items on the agenda? Approval of the minutes. Be it resolved that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the minutes of the August 12th, 2025 work session and the August 19th, 2025 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Superintendent's report. Dr. Woods.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Dylan Jones, Assistant Superintendent for her report.
Assistant Lieutenant Woods, members of the board. Good evening. Good evening, members of the community and educators. It's my pleasure to provide the September report for the district. I'd like to start with an introduction here. Just kind of a minute here for... Get that running. And I'd like to tell you that we welcome everyone back to school this year. We are very pleased to be able to welcome 197 new kindergarten students back to school for their most event there at Jordan Bank. So we're very pleased to be able to provide that. And as you can see, our students that are coming back to us as kindergarteners, they'll be the class of 2038. And I think that we can see we have future leaders in this group of students, obviously. And I've decided, in looking at them, there's a number of CEOs in these pictures. I look forward to seeing them. I hope I see them in 20 years to see how they're making out. As we move forward, we also do celebrate the remembrance of 9/11. Our high school, it's on the Arisalem, very wonderful remembrance. We appreciate what our band does, what our chorus does, our music department, and remembering all those that have given their lives and... And also here too, our elementary, our elementary students as well, have a remembrance of 9/11. And I did take an excerpt, an excerpt out of Elk Ridge's message, and I think it's very important. The students, developmentally, at school, learn about 9/11, and in doing so, they learn to respect and appreciate the firefighters, the police officers, the emergency responders, doctors, nurses, and others, who all really have helped one another and really grant and help those in need. So we remember the dedication of those, including the military, who keep us safe every day. So that was a message that was given out in Elk Ridge, and I thought it was very worthy to share here tonight. So everyone can see in our Hopeville building, you can see they do a round of coal. We have a number of scouts that get involved in that. Appreciate that. And also, we have a picture here of Nottingham with their red light of New Day. So thank you to all of our administrators, our teachers, and particularly our students for the remembrance of such an important day for us in our history. Going forward, I wanted to be able to bring to you this is last year's Keystone exams, and we'd like to take a look at our performance. How did our students do? And you can see in the blue lines, that would be the Oxford representation. And what I did here to make it a little more simplified, the blue line is Oxford and the red line is the state Pennsylvania. And the first markings there, the 43.3%, that indicates the number of students who took the Algebra I exam in both Pennsboro and the high school that were proficient or above in algebra. And then you can see the advanced, how many of our students were advanced, and then how many students were proficient. But in total, the 43.3% represented the advanced and proficient. We also look at the basic, it can be a little basic because, obviously, as you heard in the education committee meeting, we look at how we're going to support students to be able to get them to be proficient. The next one is biology. And in biology, again, that first number, that 59% of our students that were proficient or advanced in biology, as compared to 41.2% across the state. So we can see that we're surpassing the state. Again, the advanced is at 26.3%, and the state was at 16.7%. So we are surpassing in both the total proficient and advanced as well within the advanced category. So speaks well for what's going on at the high school and instructing the students. So thank you to the administration and to the science department there. Moving forward into the literature, which is another area of assessment for the Keystone exam. And you can see we are at 66.7% in total proficient and advanced, and the state is at 51%. Now typically, we were seeing around the 70-some percentiles we're looking at. We dropped about 10% of our students in the high school this year, but we're looking at why that is. We are having some concerns for next year. As you all know, that all of the state assessments are going to digital. There will be no longer paper and pencil. And we noticed that when students take them digitally, we see a suppression in scores. And I think we saw that statewide with a number of other districts that were high performing when they went to the digital, and then we all went back to paper. So we're looking at, you know, how that will affect us for next year, just to give you a heads up that this year, we will be taking those all digitally. Moving on, we invite everyone to attend first Friday, October 3rd, and that is a sneak preview of the crack that will be done on the streets in Oxford. So if you have children that are coming out, we have our teachers, I think it's Nottingham and Hopewell, will be manning the tables with their staff and administration, and they'll be happy to, I told them the most, create a mood review. So bring your students, your children over to that table, please. The Oxford Reading Club, Clawsill, October 8th, and that will be held at Hopewell, and that begins at 6:00. And as you recall, the Oxford Reading Club is where our students learn to illustrate and write their own books. So we'll be beginning that on October 8th. So we encourage students to come out to that and families to come and participate as well. And that concludes my report for this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Dylan Jones?
Sorry, I just had one question. On the last slide that you had for the Keystone exams, the basics said zero. Does that mean that there just weren't any students in that category right yet?
On this, on the literature?
What was that?
Basic, we had zero.
So there wasn't?
We had, no. We had no students that were basic.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, next up is our financial reports. Mr. Boss.
Here's the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the following financial reports: the jealous on treasury support, revenue report, expenditure report, cafeteria fund treasury support, and the Cockroll Project fund treasury support.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a few questions, basically just a line on the revenue report. So the financial, the revenue report, I understand the state, there's no revenue in the state yet because of the budget impasse going on. There's also no revenue from federal funds? Is that normal, or is that also an issue that has come up?
So not at this time, but as for all of the years, in recent history, all of our federal funds are on a reimbursement basis. Meaning that we actually incur the expenses first and then request the fund to be reimbursed. So as you'll see, as the year goes on, that funding always typically comes in later in the year.
All right. Anything else? I'm sorry. So let's see. Okay, so the expenditure report, Mr. Cooney. I, the line 2700 about transportation services, I didn't understand. Can you explain what's that showing, like the 67 and then the?
At the top of the page, which month does it say this?
July 2025.
Yeah, it's literally $67 paid in July.
Okay, all right. And then in parentheses, for 20?
For 25, so.
For the year today.
So that's a comparison to last year's. So that was actually Dylan. We recover transportation money. Sometimes we build private schools and other entities that we provide transportation for, and then we can offset our costs. So it shouldn't be a revenue line item. It actually lowers your expenses. So last year, we brought in $15,000 and billed transportation services for other entities. You're welcome.
Next up. Mr. Boss, any other question?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Student activity and athletics officials accounts, Mr. Boss.
I'll let the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approve the student activity athletics officials account, Pennsboro School, Oxford Area High School, and the athletic officials account.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Payment bills, Mr. Boss.
We resolve that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approve the payment of the following bills: the general fund for 8.1 million, cafeteria fund for 63,000, the Cockroll Projects Fund for 2 million, and the payroll distribution for 1.1 million.
Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Second? Any discussion?
Just a quick question on Commonwealth Connections Academy. That's just all cyber charter, right?
Yes.
So is that one of our biggest entity that we're paying for cyber? Is it quarter million? I think it's 258,000.
That would be one of the largest ones, or cyber.
Okay. And is that, is that payment, do we, how is that, is that retroactive? Is that, we pay some faster time? How's that work?
So based on this particular bill list, this was, you know, it says September. The earlier ones, as you'll notice, were written in August. So charter school reconciliations are supposed to be done by the end of August. So all of those entities get to send us their enrollment for the year. We verify that enrollment, and typically it comes out that they're owed a little bit of money or we're owed a little bit of money, depending on how frequently we pay. So Commonwealth Connections hasn't been paid probably since early spring. But that would make them whole for the year of the August payment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also had a question about the charter schools. So you're saying make them whole. That was for last year?
2425.
Okay. So all of these charter schools, including the center schools, where there are checks written down, are they payment for last year?
Everything you see in this meeting is from last year.
Okay. And is this a one-time payment, or are these like quarterly?
Typically quarter. Sure.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Report of intermediate unit technical college high school representative, Mr. Boss.
Last meeting was on August 20th. A lot of the focus has been around just kind of celebrating the, which I talked about a little bit, the Angola Education Center, which is obviously now open in Westboro, Adam Grove area. It's, right now is ready to welcome 72 students from 10 districts. And it is, you know, we kind of talked before, this is, now gives support to Southern Chester County, where a lot of the needs were only, you only had the ability through the Code-Spilled facility. So this, you know, saves a lot of transit, a lot of stress on the children who were being bussed up there. So this, you know, just, I think it's a huge opportunity, definitely going to be very helpful. It features 10 specialized classrooms, including life skill support, autistic support, multiple disabilities, and emotional support. They've had, you know, all kinds of things to welcome the community and the families. If you haven't been down there, they've put a lot. They definitely put some, some time and energy into the facility to upgrade it. That's the old high school, right?
Old middle school.
Thank you. And things are going, going very well there. They also talked about Bradyway Virtual Academy, which is their kind of cyber school. They are focused now to, to the next few years, reach 2,600 students. Right now, they're at about 1,300. Actually, I'm sorry. They're at a little over 700 with 1,300 course enrollments. And a technical high school, which is comprised, or composed of Bradyway, Pickering, and Penix Bridge. Total enrollment there is 3,000 students, across those three campuses. And as, as we know, that's kind of to enhance career technical skills. They have eight pre-apprenticeship programs with three more in development, dual enrollment opportunities, work-based learning experiences, which, with job shadows and so forth. And those are going really well in terms of they have, you know, cosmetology, all the other services, criminal justice, health, welding, diesel mechanics, and really some great opportunities for the students. So just going to talk a lot about things that are going on in the IU. And again, I think the, there is some students from Oxford who will be going to the Angola Education Center. So it's just a great opportunity for the, for our students and the community. And our meeting tomorrow will actually be held there. So we'll forward the report to that one.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boss? Report of Chester County School Board's Legislative Council Representative, Mrs. Stevens.
We met on August 27th. Because of the ongoing budget impasse, not many bills have advanced. But we did discuss two new bills from the Senate Education Committee that I wanted to highlight. SB 927 would require visible wellness checks for cyber charter students. Someone needs to actually lay eyes on the students and make sure that they are well. And then SB 934 would require residency verification for cyber charter students twice per academic year. I recently heard Mr. Cooney note that this is a potential loss of funds for our district because students sometimes move far outside of their home district and they don't update their records. And then since cyber charter schools don't really check records that residency frequently, the wrong district ends up paying tuition for that student. So this law could potentially help us with some cost savings if it's passed. Right now, it's only just coming out of the Education Committee. We were joined at our meeting by Tim Green and Kevin Pusher from PSBA's Department of Advocacy and Government Affairs. They highlighted HB 1814, which would create a statewide policy restricting cellphone use in schools. PSBA's position on this is that cellphone policies should remain local district decisions and not become statewide, a statewide mandate that many schools can't afford to implement. And there are so many valid reasons for students to be exempted from the process. He just really thinks that that should be a district decision, or they really think that it's a district decision. They also noticed, or noted that this is technically one of the things that schools who are receiving adequacy funding can use their funds for is buying those pouches or lockers or however you're going to do it. Not a single school in the state that receives adequacy funding has reported that that's how they use their funds. Because if you're receiving adequacy funding, this is least of your worries, is kind of the conversation that went on there. On the budget impasse, Tim also emphasized that districts are not only losing access to funds needed to pay bills, but they're also missing out on the interest that they would be earning on the funds that they should have already received if the budget had passed on time. I did a quick check with Mr. Cooney, and this time last year, we had received about $6 million from the state, which in interest would have been about $12,000 of interest that we have lost in income for our state because the budget has not been passed. We also discussed the idea of shifting the state budget cycle for schools. And I think we had talked before about it, just going to the beginning of the school year. But at PSBA, they think that if it were ever to happen, it would really make the most sense to move it to a calendar year. That way, when the budget is being made, you half already know what the budget from the last year was from the state, and then you're working with fewer variables and unknowns. But it has so many other things involved with it, including tax collection timelines and Act 1 index votes, that it's really unlikely to happen any time in the future. But I know it's been discussed several times before, so I just wanted to bring up that different perspective. He underscored the importance of school boards engaging directly with their legislators. While PSA, PSBA advocates on our behalf, at the state level, legislators are often more impacted by local stories and numbers. He encouraged us to share specifics, such as the estimated interest loss due to budget delays, projects we may have had to defer because of that, loans that need to be taken out if it stretches to a point that we need to do that, and the projected cost of unfunded mandates like HB 265, which I brought up last month, extending unemployment benefits to staff over the summer months. Some members noted that communicating with legislators who already support education funding can feel like preaching to the choir. Tim advised continuing those conversations anyway, since legislators need concrete numbers to support their arguments. For legislators who typically oppose increasing school funding, he suggested collaborating with the other districts that fall within that representative's region and presenting a united front in having those discussions. And that, in that way, you may be more successful. So I don't know if in the cards for us is having a discussion about doing more advocacy with our legislators in the future or not, if there's an appetite for having a more in-depth discussion about that. But hopefully by next month, we'll have passed a budget, and further legislative updates will be there to discuss. We meet again next week.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Stevens? Thank you. Next is report of liaison with Oxford Parent Teacher Organization, Ms. Kennedy. Okay, moving on to report of athletics and student activities. Mr. Atkinson.
The Athletics and Student Activities Committee met last Tuesday, September 9th. Our athletic director, Ms. Sterling, gave a report. We have a homecoming kickoff that's going to be on Sunday, September 28th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. School board members are inviting. This is a special event where the homecoming court will be announced and designed to get people excited for Homecoming Week. We also have three Oxford Area High Schools senior students who are serving as athletic interns. They're going to help out with the athletic newsletter and social media for athletics. The Better Way Athletics Program coaches are putting in time, and there has been positive feedback. Dr. Wood shared with us an email from our representative with the Better Way that complimented our athletic director, Ms. Sterling, for her work in implementing the program. And then a big thank you to the photography for our student athletes. And just want to, again, thank our coaches for their patience with the, with the projects going that we have going on right now. Our field hockey team continues to practice and had their games at Lincoln University. And we have a reciprocal agreement with Lincoln University, because they're without their gym right now, to allow their volleyball team to use the Oxford gymnasium while their gym is under construction. So that concludes the Athletics and Student Activities Committee report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Atkinson?
I attended the first Lincoln game last night. It was very exciting. It was really neat collegiate level volleyball right in front of your face. And I encourage others to attend. It was a really good time.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Atkinson, can you do the report for the Facilities Committee as well?
Sure. The Facilities and Safety Committee meeting was last Tuesday, September 9th. We began our conversation with this building right here, the administration building. Administration would like us, would like the Facilities and Safety Committee to consider where our board meets. We have the possibility here with our school district of running out this ground floor right here for a preschool facility. This would not be a huge cost to bring the ground floor level up to code for preschool. This would not be a huge cost to bring the ground floor level up to code for preschool use. The preschool would serve infants through preschool-aged children and would offer discounts for Oxford School District staff. Other districts have found this to be a great way to retain staff. We would be working with the same company we currently partner with, which already rents space in one of our other school buildings. If the decision is made to allow the preschool on the ground floor, board meetings would then move to a space on the first floor. And the Facilities Committee will, will discuss this at our October meeting. We then talked about the construction project going on right now, dealing with Phase Two. A Phase Two capital document was distributed. Dr. Woods asked the committee to review the document and get back to him within the week. The Administration has recommended some subtle changes, believed to be more cost-effective than the current plan. The high school HVAC upgrades have come in under budget. We're still awaiting Pennsylvania state budget approval, as we heard, and we're trying to avoid timing conflicts with our building projects improvements. The belief is that we will not need to delay the project despite the state budget not being approved yet. And again, we are hoping with some advocacy that the budget will be approved in the near future. We also discussed the timelines for the sports complex, and the Administration would like the Facilities Committee to provide direction in that October, October meeting. Okay? Dealing with the capital projects budget, Mr. Cooney provided commentary on the capital projects budget and reported that the feedback on the new lights at the stadium has been very positive, and that the high school roof has nearly been completed with only a few punch list items remaining. And that concludes our Facilities and Safety Committee meeting report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Report of Education Committee, Mrs. Vander.
The Education Committee met this evening. We were pleased to welcome the principal of Pennsboro School, Mrs. Moats, and the assistant principal of Pennsboro Middle School, Mrs. Dr. Lennon, to talk about the newly revised scheduling for our students in middle school. And the, the objective of this is to really have school-wide data and every teacher involved in analyzing and utilizing data to improve learning for all of our students. And a major theme or philosophy, and look, the way to look at students is that every student belongs to every teacher in the building, which I think goes a long way to making every child seen and, you know, really helping them to do, to get what they need from, from school. So in the new schedule, there are, each day, students receive four core classes and four core subjects, two MTSS, which is the special periods during the day where students either receive support in a certain area, or review, or remediation, special interventions to help them achieve their learning goals, and two unified art periods each day, I believe, and a lunch. So it really focuses on delving into data and using that data to help students achieve. And then, we, the second half of our meeting was to celebrate one of our very own teachers, Mrs. Jackie Mavrelos, who is a gifted support teacher in high school. This year, 2025, she has been a recipient of the 2025, of A, this is a, there's more than one recipients, but she received the, a 2025 Yale Educator Award, which she was nominated by one of her former students, who was a freshman at Yale. And she was selected by the committee, and so she has earned this award. And we were fortunate to have Owen Oliver, the, the student who nominated her, zoomed into our meeting. So that was really, really special. And Mrs. Mavrelos is also the 2025 Grand Prize winner of the Citadel Heart of Learning. So she is quite a distinguished educator, and we're pleased that she's an Oxford teacher, and we're proud. And we, we had a fun time celebrating her and her achievements. And there's more cupcakes, so I hope people will take a cup. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vander. Any questions or comments? Okay. Report of Finance and Budget Committee, Mr. Bloss.
We met earlier this month on the third. The biggest thing we wanted to talk about was, kind of the theme tonight is with lack of state funding, just where are we at from a financial standpoint? Mr. Cooney laid it out very well for us. The concern always with reduced revenue is liquidity and cash flow. And he walked through all our revenue sources for us. The good thing is that majority of our tax revenue has been collected with the labor discount deadline in late August. So we received a majority of the 42 million. And also talked a little bit about our, our Pizer's obligation. The state is not requiring that we pay the second half right now, which frees up some cash as well for us. So we're sitting in a very good position from a liquidity standpoint, making sure that bills get paid and payroll is meant. Didn't seem to be any concern for the near future with that. So, am I missing anything there, Mr. Cooney?
I'm not accurate. Thank you.
So appreciate Mr. Cooney and Team's diligence with that, just making sure that, that's always kind of a fear of when you see such a large drop in revenue, and that just talks about the, the financial stability of the district. So again, we appreciate that, as well as the greater board in terms of making sure that we're having good rational discussions about not only just managing costs, which Team's done a great job with, but also with tax revenue as well. The other thing we went over, we just had some brief discussion on some, some potential cost avoidance opportunities we went over, clear software verification piece. We also talked about delinquent tax collection, cyber charter stress, and I'll, I'll be taking back some of that. Also talked about transportation as well, and wondered if there's any opportunities saving those long-term transportation and reroutes and so forth, which is a very polarizing topic, which we, we scratched the surface, didn't go into tremendous amount of detail. Our next meeting is on October 6th. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bloss. Report of the Policy Committee, Mr. Blossington.
Yeah. In the Policy Committee, we met last week, September 9th. We were able to go over the last 10 policies we'd like to get reaffirmed, with the exception of, that Ms. Dewey's brought up tonight, number 4520. We're going to table that for a future date and go over her concerns. We were also asked about the policy 1185. A lot of, a lot of our constituents are interested in that policy, what it's done sooner than later. So Mr. Woods was able to make, have the adjustments, get forwarded on Alicia Kelson. I read them, and they looks, looks pretty good. So we'll look at that again at the next meeting, and then hopefully we can have our free readings and get this thing approved. We also had some conversations about the policy 63, some books not being able to get checked out, because we had to go over all the books that are in the library, and Mr. Woods has reached, has assured us that that will be taken care of as quickly as possible, and that they're on it. So we'll meet again next, in the, in October. And other than that, I think we're, we're moving along pretty good with our policies.
To be clear, we didn't, did we discuss 6300 during it, or we're just getting correspondence from?
That was just brought up from the emails. We didn't discuss.
Okay, okay. I just want, I was like.
But I didn't want, I just didn't want to let that go that we weren't, we weren't paying attention to our constituents.
Right.
Sent some emails, and Dr. Woods responded, and.
No, that's fine. I just want the, the minutes to reflect appropriately what happened in, in the meeting, because the way he said it made it sound like we did. That's all. I just, I want.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Report of Board and Service Schools. We don't have anything there right now. So, report of student representatives.
All, all schools have had a very, thank you. All schools have had a successful start to the year thus far. At Jordan Bay, the students have begun the year with dinosaur-focused, stomp, chomp, and learn-focused to their school year. Back-to-school night was held on September 10th, and it was successful. Initial safety drills or emergency procedures have been completed for students. Staff there is reviewing data to guide MTSS. And tomorrow, September 17th, the kindergarten areas will celebrate Constitution Day. Elfrich was, has welcomed Ms. Elizabeth Henderson as a special education teacher. And the first graders there are looking forward to their October field trip to Melbourne Orchard. Back-to-school night is Wednesday, or is Wednesday, September 17th, at 6:15. At Nottingham School, they have welcomed 462 students this year. They, their back-to-school open house and their band slash orchestra, open house, will be held on September 18th. Students and teachers kicked off the student-wide Positive Behavior presentation on September 4th. They also have continued their student mileage club and workout Wednesdays to promote healthy wellness. At Hopewell Elementary, they hosted their open house on September 11th, which was also Principals and staff have worked to assist with this week's transition from fifth and to fifth and sixth grade. Teachers have been meeting with the administration under bullets for the school year. Hopewell will also celebrate Constitution Day on September 17th. There will be a presentation on the news programs, as well as activities throughout the class. Each class is partnered with the local business during the school year. And the school thanks all businesses who share their careers and partners with their Oxford-area school district. At Pennsboro, students are earning stingers for the Principal's 200 Board to be recognized for their good choices. Students have completed diagnostic testing and are working on benchmarks for the fall and student council, the social operating. Parent teacher conferences will be on October 16th and 23rd. All middle school sports have begun, beginning starting this week. At the high school, back-to-school night will see a new format this year, as it will run as an open house. There will be a presentation in the auditorium for parents and guardians, and then they can tour the school and meet with teachers and clubs as they still live. The 2025 Homecoming Dance is scheduled for Saturday, October the 4th, with the football game being the 3rd, the day prior. Instead of a homecoming parade prior to the football game, a homecoming kickoff event will take place on September the 28th at the football stadium. High school sports and clubs will help run and host different booths and activities that will take place there. And classes are already working on a hallway decorating contest to earn spirit points. All schools did some type of commemoration for September 11th and various ways, and many students also wore their red, white, and blue that day to pay their respects. As October is Fire Prevention and Safety Month, there is plans to educate students on fire safety. At Jordan Bay, on October 12th, the Oxford Union, one fire company, will visit and share their fire and safety lessons in October, and on October 14th, the department will visit Elfrich. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, just like I did last year, I know people from the community, if there's word of mouth, if you could just pass on that, I think the members of our board are really appreciative of all the efforts of our students and our faculty, recognizing first responders, that we're not just recognizing September 11th on the 10th anniversary or the 11th anniversary, but, but it's, it's a special presentation. I know people in our community, I think, definitely really appreciated that. So thank you to our students and staff and, and administration.
Any other comments? I should have said welcome. I don't know if you have been welcome to the board. I think maybe you were earlier in the string, but welcome, and we're happy to have you here this year. Report of school programs, Dr. Woods.
No report.
Recognition of persons who requested to be placed on the agenda. Nikki Bolger.
My name is Nikki Bolger. I live in Lower Oxford and am the mother of three Oxford students. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about our students' access to education and to their school libraries. It is unacceptable that the libraries at Hopewell and Pennsboro are closed or restricted due to policy 6300. Students should never lose access to books, the very foundation of learning, because of bureaucratic delays. The district had an entire summer to prepare for this policy, yet the school year has begun with libraries effectively closed. That is a failure of planning and leadership. It is also unreasonable to expect this overwhelming workload to fall solely on our librarians and their staff. Let me be very clear, both students and library staff are being punished for a policy they had no part in creating. Families are being told libraries will reopen in four weeks. That is not a solution. That is an admission that for nearly a quarter of the market period, students will be denied access, denied full access to their libraries. And based on what I've been told, that it took three full days for one school to label only the A section, four weeks is an unrealistic timeline unless additional help is provided. Additional time should have been allowed to complete this while leaving the libraries open. The claim that this is strictly librarian-centered work and that it is inappropriate for administrators or board members to help is ridiculous. If you can run a school district, you can help in a library. I've managed people my entire career, and sometimes you have to jump in and help your people. Every administrator and every board member, especially Mr. Blossington, should be prepared to roll up their sleeves and assist. We are here to educate children, not restrict them. Closing libraries sets a dangerous precedent, one that limits opportunities for our students to relearn and grow. I urge you tonight, reopen the libraries immediately, set a future completion date for the labeling project if you must, but do not continue denying students access to books. They deserve better than this. I know you've painted yourselves into a corner, but the responsible course of action is to come together and find a way out. This policy never should have been created in the first place. It came about when Mr. Patterson became board president and appointed Mr. Blossington, the least competent board member, as chair of the Policy Committee.
Mrs. Bolger, please.
I sat in a committee meeting where Mr. Blossington expressed outrage that books are categorized as young adult. And he refused to listen to reason when other members explained that this is an industry term, not something Oxford, Oxford can control. A policy of this scope should have never been advanced without consulting our librarians, those who understand the magnitude of what was being asked and how long it would take. The responsible thing to do would have been to write a, and a transition period to allow libraries to remain open while this work was underway. Finally, this issue highlights the need for greater transparency. I strongly urge the board to pass a live-streaming policy that covers all committee meetings and work sessions. Any meeting the public has the right to attend should also be streamed and posted online. These videos should be available for at least five years, if not indefinitely, on YouTube. I know it can be done. I used to livestream every meeting myself. If I could do it, so can you. An iPhone streaming device and a few microphones are all that's needed. Better yet, involve a student audio and visual club. Give them ownership of the project for extra credit. Right now, even with this expensive audio system, it's difficult to hear on YouTube. This is solvable, and it will strengthen this community. As surprising as it might sound, this might be the only issue, where Ronnie Lutz and I agree, so don't sleep on that. Thank you.
Lindsay Johnson.
Good evening, members of the board, parents, teachers, and community members. Last week, on September 11th, our Oxford schools went into lockdown because of an event in the community. Parents rushed to phones terrified while students texted from classrooms. community. Parents rushed to phones terrified while students texted from classrooms. Yet, during those critical moments, the district gained no communication to families, not an email, not a text, nothing. That silence was unacceptable. In times of crisis, leadership must do two things: protect students and keep the families informed. On September 11th, families were left in the dark, and that failure broke trust at the very moment when reassurance was needed most. Sadly, this isn't new. It reflects a broader pattern under Superintendent David Woods and Dr. Margaret Billings Jones that include his resignation and recitation, confusion, inconsistent policies and programs, lack of transparency with investigations, and failing student performance. In October 2023, Dr. Woods resigned. By December, he rescinded that resignation. Parents, teachers, and administrators were left unsure who was actually in charge. Legal opinions suggest the resignation may not even be valid, yet this board has never held a public vote to clarify the issue. That instability trickled down into classrooms and hallways. During book policy debates in 2022, teachers were told to remove certain titles, were given no clear guidance about which books were allowed. Some classrooms had to pull materials at the last minute, while others kept them, leaving students confused and teachers anxious about compliance. In July 2025, it became public that the district was under FBI investigation. Families were stunned to learn of it from the media, not the school district. Even now, parents and staff still don't know what's being investigated or how it could affect the schools. Most concerning of all, student scores on standardized tests in math and reading have declined over the past few years. While neighboring districts have shown stability or even improvement, this proves that poor leadership isn't just a political problem, it's an academic one, directly impacting our children's futures. The results of this leadership gap are clear. Teachers face low morale. Staff surveys show declining trust in administration and uncertainty about district priorities. Parents feel excluded. During the September 11th lockdown, many said they only learned of events from police scanners, apps, or text messages from their children, not from the district. I personally learned of this from another staff member and had to go to my own school resource officer to find out what was going on. Students suffer most. They are the ones who see books pooled without explanations, sit through lockdown without reinsurance to their parents, and struggle academically as test scores decline. This board must act to restore confidence and accountability by releasing all legal opinions regarding the superintendent's resignation and rescission of, so families know who is actually leading. Hold a public vote to clarify Dr. Woods' status once and for all. Establish clear emergency protocols so that during events like last week's lockdown, families receive immediate and transparent communication. Develop a clear plan to reverse falling student test scores with accountability for measurable improvement. This plan should include supports that have been research-based and shown to increase student success, not sudden changes in how a schedule is rearranged. Recommit to genuine student-first leadership, not slogans, but actions backed by clarity.
One minute, Ms. Johnson.
Consistency and accountability. Administrations and teachers alike need to make students the center of all decisions. Dr. Woods and Dr. Margaret Billings Jones use the kids-first slogan, but their actions and inability to support the hardworking educators in this district show a different side. Our children are not a talking point you can use and make promises about and not follow through. The September 11th lockdown should have been a moment where the district reassured and united this community. Instead, silence and confusion prevailed. And while leadership scrambles, our students are falling farther behind academically. Our teachers, our parents, and above all, our students deserve better. It's a time for this board to demand leadership that communicates clearly, acts transparently, and delivers real academic results, always putting kids first.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Mrs. Warren. I'm Steve Roberts. I'm the president of the Oxford Educational Foundation. I live in Elt township. Before you tonight is an item to approve for new volunteers for the educational foundation. I hope that you'll do that. We have approaching 160 volunteers, and we're still working for more. We need more. Last school year, we weren't able to meet all the needs of the students, and we're working to get more students, more volunteers to meet that need. Last year, our volunteers worked just under 3,000 hours. And when you put a dollar value on that, the equivalent value of those hours is just under $67,000. And so, we're going to work to keep driving those numbers up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the Oxford Education Foundation motion. Amy Carbonara.
Sorry. I wanted to thank Steve for the Oxford Education Foundation. I'm Amy Carbonara from Lower Oxford Township. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you'll be able to answer me this evening, Mrs. Warren, maybe at the next meeting. My first question is, what is the purpose of the PNC procurement card? Who is authorized to use the card? There are often payments made using the card to various restaurants and eateries that I'm questioning. Since I'm currently unable to access the payments and bills from the agendas from 2024 or 2025, I went back to 2023, excuse me. There I found the following charges: $139.45 to Dunkin' Donuts. Incidentally, this was labeled as administrative software, licensing fees, and supplies. $122.17 to La Cecilia, which was labeled as dues and fees. $791.93 to Pat's Pizza. $71.94 to Wincote. $57.46 to Sawmill. And $106.61 to Holy Grounds, all of which were appropriately labeled as food, for a grand total of $1,283.56. Another question, how did this food benefit our students? Are these charges commensurate with the philosophy of kids first? I'm asking the board to please consider directing Mr. Cooney and his staff to please elaborate on the payment of bills. As an example, on the June of 2023, payments of bills under PNC procurement card is a charge of $1,411.84 to Southwest Airlines. What's missing from that is who flew Southwest? Where did that person go? For what purpose? How did this trip correspond with the philosophy of kids first progressive and a legacy of unity? Did whomever traveled on Southwest present what they learned there to faculty or staff in a way that can benefit the students? To clarify, I'm asking for more information. I'm asking the board to please consider asking the business office to please go back to informing the stakeholders. This is information that used to be on the agenda. When did this change occur? Who suggested the change and why? It is my belief as a taxpayer that by adding this information back to the agenda, it would help with the perception of transparency. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Trimble.
Hello, everyone. I'm David Trimble. I'm here as a member of East Nottingham Township. I need your help. I've got some questions that I'm being asked by parents as I circulate through the neighborhoods introducing myself. I can't explain. I don't have the information to tell the people why the libraries are closed. We understand why. We know there was a new book policy. The information people are asking is, what was the plan? How can you pass a change to a policy in June and reasonably expect to have it fully implemented by the beginning of the school year? I can't answer their question. I don't know. And I've been attending these meetings since the first of the year. So, anyone who is able to answer these questions, anybody who can give me information to pass on to the students who have these, or students as well as parents, I would love to get that information. It doesn't have to be this moment. It doesn't even have to be verbally. You can email me. Some of you have my email address. But help me help the members of the community understand what the whole of it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Personnel. Dr. Woods.
Thank you. I recommend professional, non-professional, supplemental appointments, and volunteer.
Be it resolved that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the following personnel: professional, non-professional, supplemental appointments, and volunteers. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Awarding of professional contracts. Dr. Woods.
Thank you again. Secretary Mr. Cooney will place the following names in the minutes as having attained the status of professional employee: Jennifer Zara, Christopher Evans, Ellie Fagan, Lisa Garber, Andrew Gilliger, Jessica England, Olivia Hocker, Sarah Johnson, Michael Kelly, Hannah Levin, Brian McNeil, Kaylee Uleary, Ethan Riley, Kristen Rohr, Regina Todd, Laura Weaver, and Brianna Zamberzki.
Item D, consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the following consent agenda items. One, 1302 students. Students named on the attached list are considered residents of the school district for the 2025-26 school year in accordance with Section 1302 of the Public School Code. Two, memorandum of agreement. Memorandum of agreement with the Oxford Area Educational Foundation for the recruitment, training, placement, and supervision of volunteers in the schools for the 2025-26 school year. Number three, Cecil College videotaping consent form. Approval of the request to record students via Zoom while they are presenting speeches for the Cecil College SPH 141 Public Speaking Class. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Assistant Superintendent's goals. Be it resolved that the Oxford Area School, Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the Assistant Superintendent's goals for the 2025-26 school year. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy readoption. Dr. Woods.
Thank you. I recommend the following policy readoption of 4,000 series, 4540, 4545, 4550, 4600, 4610, 4620, 4630.
Be it resolved that the Oxford Area Board of School Directors hereby approves the readoption of the following listed policies. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New policy first read.
New policy first read. 1,000 series, policy 1185, broadcasting board meetings.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to ask if we were planning to read the policy in meetings, or if that's possible, so I can do that.
I actually had a different comment before we go to reading the whole thing. I was, cross-referencing this because we had talked about how long we would retain records. With our existing policy 1180 today, and I do not realize, they are almost the exact identical document, with the exception of 3B and the addition of items 8 through 11. The only difference between these two policies is that one refers to live streaming and one refers to recording, which I'm fine with. I guess I'm wondering why it took us so long if they were going to end up being identical documents that I know I saw around the committee. But I, at some point, I thought we were going to get a more original something out of this, and I know we, it is very close to the ones that we sampled, but it just seems like a poor waste of time that it took so long to get to this. I didn't, I just, I hadn't reviewed the 1180 in over a year, and now it's just really bugging me that we've lost so much time on something that's pretty much identical.
Well, I will say, it wasn't on the agenda for the first six, three, four, five.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't even available.
I, yeah, I understand. It's just.
Yeah. So, before, to your point, because she brought that up, what would we, will we continue to have both policies once they're approved? And to answer your question, we don't usually read attachments that are attached to the agenda, so I hadn't planned on reading it aloud since people can read it attached to the agenda, but I won't think I need a few fills.
Thank you. So, we do have the 1180. This one is 1185. I just had a question. These, the recordings would be made available to the public of these meetings, and it says that someone would be recording them. My question about this policy and even the 1180 is, if we're planning to livestream, I know that we, for some time, had these board meetings on the Oxford channel on Armstrong, and I don't know what happened, why they were removed from there. I thought that was a great place for people to go to watch them on the nights we were having the meetings. Is that something that's still in the plans? I didn't see that in there at all.
Not at this time.
But, and why was it discontinued?
I'm not sure we were able to do that anymore.
What does that mean? Sorry.
I don't, I don't believe our technology allowed us or something with Armstrong in our agreement to air that on that community channel existed anymore. That stopped some time ago. I don't have the exact answer to your question now, but I don't think it was entirely Oxford to stop that.
I'm just wondering if it's something that we should go back and review again with them to see if that's a possibility.
It's really up to the board.
I will say, people complain about what's on YouTube, but I used to watch those, and you couldn't hear anything. The ones that was on the channel 68, it was pretty bad.
So, if we're planning to buy new equipment, and that was my other question, sorry, in order to do the live streaming, would the audio then be corrected? Because I know that we are waiting on this policy in order for us to determine whether or not we needed new equipment and so forth. Like, that was part of the conversation that we were having around updating the staff, or creating this document. Will we have new equipment?
That is the plan.
Right. So, if we have new equipment and the speaker system works adequately, then my proposal would be that we go back and look to see if we can add this again to the Oxford channel on Armstrong while we're live streaming.
Just, just looking at here, most, there's not too many cable stations that do this anymore. Many school boards are moving to live or archive streaming via Zoom or YouTube or the school district's website instead of relying on traditional cable broadcasts. Often cheaper, reaches more people, is more accessible, and most cable stations are not allowing this anymore. In fact, I'm pretty sure Armstrong doesn't even have that one particular channel anymore, so.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. So, 1185, Community Relations Broadcasting Board Meeting. The board recognizes the usefulness of broadcasting the proceedings of publicly convened board meetings, work sessions, and from time to time, other public meetings of the board and its committees. Therefore, the board at its discretion. Therefore, the board, at its discretion, may broadcast all or any portion of its board meetings, work sessions, or other public meetings of the board or committees of the board, subject to the following limitations. The broadcasting of any board meeting, work session, or other video-recorded board meeting produced by the district is the exclusive property of the district to be used at the board's discretion. The broadcasting of any board meeting, work session, or other board meeting produced by the district is not the official record of the meeting. The board-approved written minutes will continue to be the official record of the meeting. While it is the board's intent to broadcast board meetings in their entirety, the board, at its discretion, may discontinue the broadcasting of a meeting at any time by a majority vote of the quorum in attendance at a particular public meeting if broadcasting becomes impractical due to equipment malfunction, operator unavailability, or if the broadcasting is creating any impediment to conducting the meeting in an orderly fashion. And it is the board's intent to livestream and post video and audio-recorded public board meetings in their entirety. However, the board recognizes that unforeseeable malfunctions of equipment or other, I'm sorry, or the network, disruptions in platforms or internet access, unexpected operator unavailability or error, or weather events may occur which may limit the district's ability to livestream or post a public meeting in whole or in part. In such an event, the district shall publish the available portion of the public meeting in accordance with this policy. The agenda for the meeting will contain a notification that all or a portion of the meeting is being video-recorded for the purpose of public broadcast. At the discretion of the board, the broadcast of a particular meeting may contain a notification disclaiming responsibility for statements made by those in attendance at the meeting. After broadcast, the actual recording containing the video of any public board meeting produced by the district may be recorded over, archived at the discretion of the district. The video recorder will be stationary and will only be focused on the board, the superintendent, the board secretary, and all persons formally addressing the board during the meeting. At no time will the camera operator scan over the audience to obtain any type of cameo or surprise shots. Records will be maintained for one year from the date of the recording. Attendees do not have an expectation of privacy during the public meeting. Attendance at a public meeting will be considered consent for audio and video recording by the district and for the use of any images or statements of those in attendance. The opinions or statements made during the public meeting are those of the individual and not necessarily the opinions or statements of the district. The district does not necessarily endorse or support the views, opinions, statements, or information contained in the livestream or recording of the public meeting. And there's a typo here under number 10, just some extra space that needs to be removed. Any board member, district employee, or any other persons who believes she or he has been defamed at a board meeting or otherwise believes that a violation of applicable federal or state law has occurred should notify the board president or superintendent designee immediately. The superintendent designee will consult with the solicitor and/or the board to determine if any editing is necessary and appropriate. Non-public meetings shall not be broadcast. Thank you.
Now, I just would like to make clear to the audience and to anyone watching this later that on the electronics section on our website where it has the agendas, these are all available as attachments, so these can all be read prior to coming to the meeting or if you want to refer to it afterwards, they're all available to you should you want to read them. Any other discussion on 1185?
So there are three readings, tonight, October, November, and then it will be voted on in January. Is that what the schedule or...
I think that at the third reading we vote.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and that would assume that there are no major changes. Policy revision, first reading, Dr. Woods.
Thank you. 4,000 Series Personnel, Policy 4530 and 4720.
Any discussion?
On 4720, we struck volunteer from the first paragraph, but it still remains as volunteer's choice in one.
Yeah, fortunately, this is the first reading, so we're still investigating that.
Okay.
We have some married answers right now.
Yeah, and I actually went back and found that answer on the volunteers that we had said how much at the time. So in Policy 4410, our volunteer policy, on page three, it states that the threshold for volunteers is if they spend 10 or more hours per week in our district, then they need to comply with 4720. So if we strike here, we're going to have to go back and also revise that volunteer policy, correct?
Yeah, it's likely it's not going to be stricken. That's going to be the recommendation. Again, we're just making sure that we're trying to follow state code.
Okay.
On what direct contact is the term. So in the policy we're looking at here, 4720, I think it has contact.
Okay.
Rather than direct contact. So that might be the recommendation, but again, we're still hunting that down.
Okay.
Yep. So, I mean, you're spot on with the level of volunteer, and that makes it 4,400 Series. It makes it clear what that is, but we want to make sure that we're also following the legislation.
I just so happen to be at urgent care with one of my children this week, and I saw three people come in for their tuberculosis spots to get checked, and overheard that the cost of that is about $50, so it's an added cost for our volunteers and just... I know that there's state-coded reason behind it, but I just also wanted that to be noted, that there's that extra.
Appreciate it.
And that's the only change in that policy, but I just wanted to also provide that policy change for 4530, where it was talking about very specifically in September, professional employees desiring to return. We had in September, must notify the superintendent, and we changed that to at the start of the school year. And then also for professional employees desiring to return from parental leave in January, that was stricken, so the start of the second semester was put in place. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, Item I, Policy Revision, Second Reading, Dr. Woods.
Thank you. 4,000 Series, Policy 4460.
Any discussion? Motion to accept the resignation of Mark Patterson effective September 16, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think that whenever we have anybody resign, no matter what the reasons, that we send a letter of thank you and appreciation for service. This is, as we know, this is a completely voluntary position that we're in. Mr. Patterson has served for a long period of time for our district, so I think just a note of appreciation would be appropriate.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Closing items, correspondence, Mr. Cooney.
Yes, I believe that as an attachment to your packet, there is a review of some of the correspondence that have been received since the last meeting.
Any questions there? Does anybody have anything to add to the calendar? Okay, all meetings are here in the administration building unless otherwise noted. Monday, October 6, 2025, Budget and Finance Committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 14, 2025, Policy Committee at 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 14, Athletic and Student Activities meeting, 6:30. Tuesday, October 14, Facilities and Safety Committee, 6:45. Tuesday, October 14, Work Session at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 21, Education Committee meeting at 6:30. And Tuesday, October 21, Regular Meeting at 7:00 p.m. Announcement of Executive Session, we have had none. Follow-up to any questions, community questions, concerns? German. Do I have a motion for a German?
You call me a German? I'm sorry. Am I missing an attachment for correspondence on the electronic calendar?
Paper attachment.
I'm so sorry. Okay, great. I was looking on here.
I have one thing before we go. In light of the craziness that's been happening recently, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, and in particular, for those poor school students in Minnesota that happened. I meant to mention it last week, and I got sidetracked, and I'm sorry, but, and maybe, and I'm very happy with the way our school protects our kids. I think we've had many discussions with security, and I think it's excellent, and I appreciate the job they do well. So I'd just like to take a moment of silence for them, and then, of course, everything, all the other things that have been piled on. So if we could use one moment of silence, please.
Can I have a motion for a German?
No, excuse me.
Second. He is adjourned.